All right, thank you for being patient. We will now call the meeting to order. As a reminder, if you would like to speak to submit public comment, please email the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@eastfalc.gov or by utilizing the Raise Your Hand function in GoToWebinar to speak at the meeting. During comment, the clerk will call your name and unmute. Also, just take into consideration when we allow you to mute, we'll give about a five-second delay. That usually happens on the GoToWebinar. Just make sure you state your name clearly because sometimes things can come in a little muffled. Staff will monitor emails to the extent possible during the meeting and provide comments as possible. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Present.
Councilmember Rigby?
Here.
Councilmember Tassari?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yao?
Here.
Mayor Pla?
Here.
All right, we will now move to our invocation, which will be led by Father Patrick Kirsch. Thank you, Father, for being here today.
Father, in heaven, we thank you. We thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for the very breath that you give us. We thank you for your presence in our lives, which sustains us at each and every moment. We come before you at every moment asking for your continued guidance and help. We are faced with this unprecedented pandemic, which has touched so many lives. So many people have died and have suffered because of this. We're doing the best that we can. Help us to be strong and continue to witness to your love in a world, a world where people now believe that you are present because of such tragedy. Help them to realize that you cry with us and that you'll never abandon us. Father, we lift up this beautiful city of Eastville. We thank you for all the good men and women here who lead this city so that it could be all that it's called to be. Enlighten them and help them to continue to be all that you want them to be so that your will will be done in each and every person within this city. Help us to continue to be vigilant as we begin to reopen and to try to begin to live normal lives. Help us to be cautious and to be careful that this pandemic will not continue and grow. We also ask, Lord, that you begin to guide us and continue to guide us with the racial justice that needs to take place here and without our whole country. Help us, Lord, so that we can see in each person your presence in your life and to treat others as we would want to be treated with love and respect. We ask you now, Lord, to heal all the pain and hurt that has been brought on in these days of suffering and pain in our country. And help us, help us to continue to find ways to grow together so that we can fulfill your commandment to love you with our whole heart and with our whole soul, to love our neighbor and to love ourselves. We thank you, we praise you, and we bless you, and we ask now to send your Holy Spirit on all those who are gathering or watching virtually so that they can be all that you want to be. We ask this now in your most precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Father, for the blessing and those kind words and the words of wisdom. Thank you. We'll now be led by our pledge allegiance by Councilmember Rigby.
If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll now move to item number seven, additions and revisions. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on the item and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. In action adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Mark, is there anybody from staff that's requested to add an item?
No, Mayor.
Councilmembers? Okay, seeing that's none, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is presentations and announcements. We will now recognize item 8.1. This is kind of hard to recognize, I'd be honest. It's going to be sad, but we're going to recognize our Riverside County Sheriff Lieutenant, Tim Martin. Tim, would you mind going to the podium? And then also my colleagues that are present here as well, if we can come to the podium as well. and service to the city of Eastville. Lieutenant Martin served as Eastville's Chief of Police from June 2017 until June 2020. He has played an active role in the community where he oversaw many new projects and initiatives to continue making Eastville the number-one city to live in. His commitment to the safety of Eastville residents and businesses allowed Eastville to remain safe. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Martin for his commitment to the city of Eastville and wish him the best in his next venture. Any words from colleagues?
Congratulations on your promotion that's coming soon. I'm sure Eastville had everything to do with it because you did such a good job of running our law enforcement services here. We were proud to have you. You will be missed, and hopefully your replacement will have just as good a relationship with us, and I'm sure he will. Thank you.
Sure, just real quick. Thank you. We appreciate everything that you've done. One of the things that really sticks out is I remember a couple of times that I would reach out to you and I would ask you about a resident wanting to get in contact and how's the best way to get in contact with you? And you're very open to them and for them to email you directly or to call you directly. And as a police chief for us, that means a lot. Our community appreciates that. It shows that you really care about our community. Like Brandon said, like the mayor said, it's a bittersweet. We know it's something that's well-deserved, but it's hard for us to see you go, to see what you've done over the last few years. But we truly appreciate all you've done in leading the deputies as well as keeping our city safe. So have some big shoes to fill, no pressure, but we truly appreciate what you've done.
You actually took those words. You know, good people don't last very long, right? And so they always go somewhere because they're needed somewhere else. But exactly, so there's been so many situations where someone has emailed or texted me and it's more of a question that's in your purview. And it might have been just kind of a smaller situation, but you responded, responded immediately back to those individuals and those small things. But even during our protest that we had, you know, the first one out, I was there present, your leadership with those deputies and the protests over there, it was a matter of peace. And peace and harmony is from both sides, right? And your leadership there to create such a peaceful protest along with those protesters is a reflection of your deputies and your leadership as well. And for us, I use that as the most recent example. It's important that it has, and we appreciate that a lot. And so we appreciate all your service as well. So thank you.
Well, I just want to thank City Council for all your support, not just for me, but for all law enforcement, Riverside County Sheriff's Department. You guys have treated all of our deputies very well. And I also want to thank City Hall staff. I've made some great friends over the last three years, and they have such a wonderful team here. It's been a great time working in this city, and I'm going to miss it. So thank you.
Thank you. That means a San Francisco Giants fan.
Why'd you got promoted?
He's a winner.
All right, it's another tough one, too. So.
No, he's not here.
Where's To- oh.
Tovar's fighting a fire right now down the river bottom, so he'll be late. So if he's able to make it, you can.
Chief Icke, do you want to accept on his behalf?
Or should we postpone it?
Should we postpone it?
Why don't you do it? And then if he's able to come later, we can do it again when he gets here. And then if not, we can just hand-deliver it to him.
All right. Well, we'd love to have him if he comes in. So I'll read this just for the sake of the audience that is listening as well. So the city is pleased to recognize and commend Cal Fire Battalion Chief Richard Tovar for his commitment and service to the city of Eastville. Chief Tovar served as Eastville's Battalion Chief from June 2018 until June 2020. He oversaw Fire Station 27 and 31 while providing services to the residents and businesses in Eastville. I'd like to thank Chief Tovar for his commitment to the city of Eastville and wish him the best in his next venture. I will save this, my words, for him later, so we appreciate that. And then Chief Icke, yeah, we can give you the award as well, or we can keep it, but the certificate of recognition. So, thank you. So also, we want to introduce our Riverside County Sheriff, the new lieutenant, that'll be coming, Mark Boyd, if you want to come up. So we welcome you to our city of Eastville. We've got some big shoes to fill, but I've heard nothing but great things. And we met relatively two weeks ago for the first time, and it was a pleasure and got to see you as also handling a peaceful protest as well. And it just, again, goes to demonstrate, you know, the leadership that you have as well. Any words you'd like to say?
I think Tim has an introduction for him.
Tim, you have an introduction? Okay, come on up.
Hi, love. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Mark Boyd. Lieutenant Mark Boyd has 25 years of law enforcement experience, 21 of which are with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. He has held assignments in corrections, patrol operations, special teams, community services, sheriff's administration, and the regional gang task force. Lieutenant Boyd has worked in the contract cities of Temecula, Marina Valley, and most recently worked at the Lake Elsinore Station, where he managed the law enforcement contract for the city of Lake Elsinore. Lieutenant Boyd is a U.S. Army veteran and holds a bachelor's degree from Southern Illinois University. He is married with three children. This is Lieutenant Mark Boyd.
We do this to compare the color of your hair and the amount of hair after you're done.
Big shoes to fill, and I recognize that, but it's an honor to be here, and it's an opportunity that I do not take lightly. I look forward to partnering with the city government, city staff, and the community to make Eastville a great place to live and work.
He's already taken over Lieutenant Martin's spot. I've never seen Lieutenant Martin leap so quickly like that, geez. It was sentimental for the moment, now I'm just offended. All right.
Mayor, I might just add that our two lieutenants are on day 16 of emergency operation plan, working somewhere between 16 and 20 hours a day, and they still have to go home and change the sprinkler heads on their front yard, apparently, I heard today. Along with all the deputies that are, so they've all been working 16 straight days on the emergency operation plan. And so, and the reason why Lieutenant Martin's shoes are a little dirty right now is because he was just down in the river bottom helping out with the fire down there, so still aspiring to be a firefighter.
Okay, good. And I do some comments later also, to add the city council comments, I'll kind of go in more in detail, kind of about my experience two weeks ago with your team, so definitely I'll share that later tonight. All right, Luis Hernandez, would you like to come up as well? And Brian, if you would like to present Luis as well?
Yes. The city of Eastville Finance Department is happy to welcome Accounting Manager Luis Hernandez to the team. Luis was born and raised in east Los Angeles and graduated from Cal State Fullerton with a degree in business administration. After college, he began his accounting career in the private sector. Luis then began working with the county of Riverside as an accountant two, before accepting an opportunity with the city of San Bernardino as an accountant three. Luis said his time at the city of San Bernardino was a great learning experience and prepared him well for his new role as an accounting manager for the city of Eastville. Growing up, Luis spent most of his time in western Riverside County area, visiting friends and family, as well as riding his horse along the San Ana Riverbed. It was during his time spent on horseback riding through the winding trails of Norco that Luis observed firsthand the exponential growth that Eastville was experiencing, the growth that resulted in Eastville becoming the thriving community that it is today. Luis still remembers the days when Eastville was made up of just a few housing tracts set amongst the dairy farms. Occasionally, he would visit Eastville to dine at Buffalo Wild Wings. Now, he works just steps away, no horse needed. Luis is a great addition, and we welcome him to the team. And before he even started here, we got some unsolicited kudos on the great hire that we made in Luis. The Cub Scouts, not the Boy Scouts.
We'll now go to public comment. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on the agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda to be made at the time the item is considered and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. If you wish to submit a public comment, please email the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@eastfalc.gov. Staff will monitor emails to the best extent possible during the meeting and provide comments as possible during the meeting. All comments will be made part of the record. Once public comment has been received via email, comments will then be read into the record with a maximum allowance of three minutes per individual comment. If a comment is received after the agenda item is heard but before the close of the meeting, the comment will be included as part of the record of the meeting but will not be read at the meeting. If you are joining using the GoToWebinar, raise your hand, which is a little icon on your screen. Now, and the clerk will call you when it is your turn. We will wait a few seconds. Mark, is anybody that has submitted for public comment?
Yes, we have two written comments, and we have two speaker slips from the public tonight. I'll start with the written comments. This is from Keith White. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We are coming from a diverse background. This is the second time now that the city of Eastville has made the news, which shows when a city like ours, and we are coming together, and when I saw the sheriff deputy hug that high school kid, it made me cry. As other cities, they should learn from us. We are, we need to work together so we can be a better city, since I live here, the residents that see me in my wheelchair still ask if I need help, and I appreciate it. We have to set our minds to be positive and not negative about things. I just want to thank the mayor and city council and all the staff that work so hard to keep our city safe. Thank you very much. This next comment is from Julie Rust. Good evening, Mayor Pla and City Council. First, I'd like to thank you for the excellent communication you have shared through this COVID crisis. Our families grateful for the updates, and our prayers go out to those who have been directly affected by this pandemic. I'm certain that during these times, decisions pertaining to health and safety will take precedent as we move forward as a city. As a vested resident of Eastville, I'd like to express our desire to see more collaborative efforts in keeping our city in tip-top shape, whether it's through community enhancement, continuing their vision of being proactive rather than reactive, JCSD bringing the curb appeal back to so many frontages and landscapes in our city, and residents, owners, investors, and renters alike taking responsibility for their homes, each doing their part to not allow a potentially challenging economy from becoming the reason or excuse for not keeping our neighborhoods safe and aesthetically up to par. Thank you for your time. And for the comment cards for the public here, we have Ike Boothma.
Good evening, council, mayor, council, city staff. I just want to kind of thank the mayor, the council, the city manager, the staff, even Mark, and the police and fire for all the great things they did in the last couple, actually, last couple of weeks, how they ran the city. I'm very proud. I know they spent a lot of extra hours, and it's pretty much time-consuming, but I really appreciate everything you did to keep our city safe. Also, I'd like to thank the city staff for working with the chamber on giving a $10 gift certificate to the graduates of Roosevelt High. I think there's probably over 1,000 $10 gift certificates handed out, and I think that's a great honor. It just showed a little recognition to the graduating seniors at Roosevelt that they didn't have, you know, that they lost out on. And also, I'd like to kind of hope that our 10-year celebration in October is still moving forward. I know we're going to be tight of cash, and I would like to say if we have to do a fundraiser, I would put $1,000 to start with for a fundraiser for our city celebration, because, you know, 10 years is kind of special, and I hope we are able to move forward on it. Thank you, and have a good day.
Next comment card is from Rhonda Roberts.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for running such a wonderful city. We love you. Brian Roberts and myself have been here for 12 years, and we think it's an awesome, diverse city. We love the schools here, our neighbors are great, we just really love the community here. I do want to read something, and I'm hoping that Eastville can follow suit of the Marines and the Navy and other cities that are looking to tear down some things that we might not serve us so well moving forward. I decided that the country festival that happened last year, was it last year? Yeah. Love that idea. I thought it brought great energy to the community, but what disturbed me was driving by and seeing a huge Confederate flag flying right on the end of one of the vehicles there. You know, to each his own, but I think moving forward, if we could follow suit and implement, I know we can't do it at people's houses, although I have seen it hanging two streets away from me, I think if we can implement some sort of ban on public display of those items, I think we could have a peaceful move forward. I looked up why this flag would stir feelings in me when I would see it. I'm originally from Texas, and I saw this flag quite a bit. And coming out here to California, I didn't know or think that I would really see it as much as I have been seeing it. But I looked it up, and on Wikipedia it says, "The modern display of flags used by and associated with the Confederate States of America started in response to the civil rights movement in the 1950s and 1960s and continues into the present day. Their revival began with Senator Strom Thurmond's Dixiecrat in reaction to growing public support for racial equality alongside opposition to civil rights in 1948." So I'm hoping that Eastville can be a forward-moving city, and knowing that these are some issues, the issues that we're dealing with at hand, that we can just maybe get rid of or ban anyone that's displaying this image so that we can keep our city unified. And I know we probably can't do it at people's homes, but if we can follow suit with what the Marines and the Navy and other cities are doing across the country, I would love that. And I think Eastville's great already, but this would take us over the top as well. Thank you.
Thank you for all public comments, and I thank you for that, Rhonda. Appreciate it.
No additional comments. No one's raised their hand.
We'll now move to item number 10 on the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or a member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Mark, is any staff member or any member from the public has requested to pull any item?
Not currently. Want to give it a couple of seconds?
Yep.
No, no one's raised their hand.
Okay. Councilmembers, are there any items you'd like to pull? Okay, seeing that there is none, then I'd solicit a motion and a second.
So a mover for Lorimer.
Second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yao? Can you try that one more time?
Yes.
Oh, gotcha. Mayor Pla?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, we'll now move to item 11.1. At this time, we will conduct one public hearing item. If you'd like to speak before the city council tonight, please email the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@eastfalc.gov. If you are joining using the GoToWebinar, raise your hand, which is a little icon in front of your screen during the public comment portion, and the city clerk will call you in when it is your turn. Following the staff report and opening of the public hearing, I will ask the city clerk to read any comments that have been submitted electronically and call on those who would like to speak. We'll begin the public hearing. And Amanda, this will be your item to present.
If I can just make a quick introduction on this, just for everybody in the audience. We started the budget process in January, in a very different financial time in this world, prior to COVID and a number of other things. And we did budget workshops with council back in February and early March. And then mid-March, our businesses started closing down due to the state order, and towards, we weren't sure how long that was going to last. And we were about 65%, maybe 70% of the way through creating a budget, and we said, "Stop." And we gave direction to our finance department, and we came back to council on April 29th or so, somewhere late April, and said, "Here's our current financial situation that we understand it to be, and here's what we're projecting through the rest of the fiscal year." And we asked our finance director to do 100% of the budget in 30% of the time and redo it all over again, removing about 15% of the budget. So it was a monumental feat to get us to where we are here tonight, and these are the original dates in which she said she would get the draft budget and the final budget to council, and she still made them in spite of COVID-19. And so that is just one of the many examples that we could highlight of the city staff doing heroic efforts over the last three months with COVID. So I just want to highlight Amanda. She does not like the recognition, but I had to pour it on a little thick because it's well-deserved.
Good evening, mayor and council members, those in attendance. Tonight, before you, we have agenda item 11.1, which is our adopted annual operating and capital improvement budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. So this is the adopted budget presentation. It's the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th of 2021. The document is found as an attachment to item 11.1. It's our financial plan for the next fiscal year. And considering the revenue and economic impacts of COVID-19, the plan is based on staff's best estimates as of early May 2020. The plan is to bring quarterly financial reports to the council, starting with the quarter ending June 30th of 2020, which we will try to present the second meeting in August and the first quarter of fiscal year 2020, 21, ending September 30th, 2020, should be presented in late October, early November. Staff's goal is to report to council any significant changes in revenue receivables or economic projections due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So this is a shorter presentation, version of the presentation that was presented to council on May 27th. The focus is mainly on the general fund. The only change from the draft presentation is a title change for one proposed position. It's still under the same salary range, but it's just.
It's still under the same salary range, but it's just a title change, and we'll talk about that on a later slide. So our budget approach here, we have an adopted budget policy, which says that expenditures shall not receive or exceed revenues. General fund unassigned fund balance can be appropriated only for one-time expenditures. So we'll talk about this a little bit when we talk about fund balance and our CIP. We do have expenditures exceeding revenues, but it is due to one-time expenditures. Continuing appropriations, this is unspent capital project and grant budget from the prior year that will be carried forward into the next fiscal year. These are included in the budget figures, and we're going to come back in fall of 2020 with the updated figures for that, so we can get accurate figures into the budget. And then the GAN appropriations limit, our revenue appropriations comply with the California Constitution. So when we presented the COVID-19 impacts in April, we projected a moderate scenario and a severe scenario. The moderate scenario that we projected is the one that's included in budget, and you'll notice that these revenue and expenditure numbers are quite different from what we're actually adopting, and that's because we implemented some changes. But overall, we were looking at a $3.3 million deficit had we just continued on the same path without making any changes. So this was the slide that was presented at the end of the COVID-19 presentation, and council had some lengthy discussion about how we were going to sign those budget cuts. Ultimately, we did layoffs in spring of 2020. We budgeted personnel for actual costs. We have been budgeting at top step. Now we're actually budgeting at the actual step that the incumbent is at, plus 5%. No merit increases for current staff. We reduced travel and training budget, tuition reimbursements, and professional development. We negotiated contract staff savings and reductions. We're bringing key positions in-house, which will save us contract savings. And then no CIP increases for our legal, Interwest and Michael Baker contracts. They, Interwest and Michael Baker provide Public Works, engineering, planning, and building and safety services. We're continuing to negotiate professional service savings and reductions as contracts come up to be renewed. We, council chose the hybrid staffing model, option two, which saved the city a bit of money, and we are reducing the business incentive loan budget from $500,000 down to $200,000. We're removing the contingency budget from the budget, and we're using reserves for one-time capital expenditures. So general fund revenue is $22.7 million is projected for next fiscal year. We love these graphics. So for every $1 in sales tax that a resident spends, or someone who's in our city and spends some money, every dollar that they spend, 13 cents comes back to the Eastville General Fund. And then on the property tax side, for every dollar of tax paid, the City of Eastville General Fund gets 2 cents of that dollar, and the City of Eastville Pirate Fire Production Fund gets 6 cents. So these are our main general fund revenue categories. Sales and use tax is 37%, and then property tax on the other side is 11%. The license permits and fees and fines, penalties and forfeitures, we're actually projecting significant reductions in that due to our ability to actually collect and fight with community enhancement. Not community enhancement, yeah, community enhancement and safety, right? Got it, okay. So for our general fund revenue assumptions, we have a big dip here in the sales and use tax, and I kind of want to point out that we've got amended budget from the current year, and then we've got projected actuals and then proposed budget. And if you'll notice, it's a 1.3% reduction from the prior year budget, but it's actually an increase from our projected actuals that we're projecting for the current year. So although it's a 13% budget difference, it's actually an increase over what we think we're going to receive in the current year. Other taxes is our property transfer tax. This is a tax that the city receives on every real estate sale, and we're projecting 18% reduction there. And then again, the licenses, permits, and fees, and the fines, penalties, and forfeitures, we're projecting pretty significant reductions there. The other big reduction is in miscellaneous. In the current year, we had a WR called rebate for our streetlight project, and so that was in the prior year, there was a one-time revenue. We're not going to get that in the current year, and that's really what that 86% reduction was. So in total, it's an 8% reduction from the prior year budget, but again, if you look at the projected actuals versus the proposed budget, it's actually a $1 million increase. Our general fund expenditures are projected at $23.6 million. So these are our big departments that we have here. Law enforcement is 49% of the general fund. General government includes ITS, building maintenance, and transfers to other funds, revenue neutrality, payments to Riverside County, and our sales tax abatement. And then you can see all of our other departments. The community development department is actually administration, planning, building, engineering, community enhancement, and safety. And then this is actually a new graph that we didn't see in the last presentation, just to break down the four main categories that you'll see repeated throughout the budget document. Operations for us is 73%, personnel is 18%, transfers out to other funds is 8%, and capital outlay is 1%, and that is IT software, I believe. So our general fund expenditure categories, you'll see a flip-flop a little bit in personnel going up and operations going down. Operation also includes some new expenditures, including budget for the streetlight electricity from that debt that we took on when we purchased streetlights. And then revenue neutrality payment is what the city is required to make to Riverside County based on an agreement from the city's incorporation. Previously, we paid 100% from the fire fund, and 50% needs to be paid from the general fund according to the agreement. So that's why operations is not quite coming down as much as you would see considering the personnel changes that we're making. Opera, or, well, the glass is like, making it look funny, sorry. Okay. Capital outlay and transfers is kind of flip-flopped a little bit there. Previously, we paid for capital improvement directly out of the general fund. We're now transferring that out to the CIP fund, so that's why you're seeing a little flip-flop there. Overall, we cut, my circles are off. That's sad. 10% reduction in our general fund expenditures. So just looking at the main changes that we made with contracts and personnel, we are adding eight and a half new positions. These are all currently contracted out. We're adding an office specialist in communities development and administration and building, a city engineer, senior engineer, and associate engineer in the engineering department, a building official, a senior community and building safety specialist, and a community and building safety specialist in building, and then planning is adding an assistant planner and a part-time planning technician for a total of 8.5. So the personnel addition, the employee cost, which is in the 2020, 21 line, that is what it's going to cost the city to add these positions, which is $1.1 million. The contract cost for next year is $1.7 million. So by bringing the positions in-house, the annual savings is $595,000. The employee cost for these positions is actually budgeted at step seven, so top step. They probably will not come in at top step, and it has their fully burdened rate as far as benefits go, so it's a full package for the cost of those positions. Additionally, if you-
So the savings could be even greater.
Could be, yeah. If the positions are not brought in-house, the payment that we would potentially have to make to Calpers for having these positions in-house would increase the contract cost to $1.8 million, with a $134,000 payment having to go to Calpers to pay for contributions for not bringing the positions in-house. So on the contract side, by bringing these positions in, we have cut contracts in building and safety, the private development line, that first one there is actually building and safety that's actually built out to developers, planning, and then private development of planning services that are billed to developers, and then engineering services. You can see that we actually cut $2 million from the contract budget, whereas if we go back to the previous slide, we showed 1.7 in costs, but we're actually, we actually cut the contracts down a little bit more because of some COVID impacts. Additional savings, I believe, we'll see more in the general fund because we are charging engineering 100% to the general fund, and as those employees work on CIP projects, their time will be recorded to special revenue funds, which will alleviate the general fund some of that burden. Right now, we're not quite sure how that's going to work out, so we 100% budgeted for these positions in the general fund. So this is a little graphic to show the course of actually positions going up, the cost of positions going up, and then contracts coming down. The dashed lines are total citywide, so the red dashed line is citywide contracts. You can see those costs coming down and crossing the line with citywide personnel in the green dashed. Interwest is the yellow line. They provide Public Works, building and safety, and engineering services. You can see those contract costs coming down. Community development personnel is the purple line, which is increasing, and so you can see the yellow line and the purple line increasing in the proposed budget for 2021 as we bring those positions in-house. And then you can see Michael Baker, who provides the planning services, that's crossing earlier on with the purple line of community development personnel, as we brought our director for community development and the planning manager in-house during the current fiscal year. So available resources, this is what is left over in our funds after we have rolled the budget, or rolled the fund balances forward, and then added in revenues and subtracted out expenditures. So general fund balance, we have our revenues for next fiscal year at $22.7 million, expenditures at $23 million. When we subtract that out, we actually have a general fund deficit of $946,000. So an operating statement, so this is looking at what it takes to run the city on a day-to-day basis, and then taking out the one-time expenditures that are built into budget. We have our general fund deficit, and then we have one-time expenditures, which are transfers out to the CIP fund, so if we begin to add those back in, we have $1 million budgeted for the Hamner Place infrastructure, which we are contractually obligated to fulfill this fall. We need to put in some landscaping down there. The general plan, which is well underway, needs a little bit of general fund to get going. There's a police traffic motorcycle replacement for $30,000. And then there's a fund balance deficit currently in the CIP fund that we need to cover, and these are all one-time costs, these are not going to repeat year after year. In total, that's $1.5 million. You add that to the $946,000 general fund deficit, and we get an operating surplus of $573,000. If we pulled all these one-time costs out, we actually would not have a deficit. The deficit is caused by one-time expenditures, which our budget policy allows us to use reserves to pay for one-time expenditures. So we have committed fund balance that the council has committed by action of resolution. We have an emergency contingency. This is based on the council's policy of 50% of the budgeted expenditures to be set aside as an emergency contingency. Our civic center and library reserve is set at $8 million. The public safety rate increase stabilization is set aside as $1 million, and then we have a pension liability reserve of $1.5 million for a total of $22.3 million. So we have an estimated fund balance at the end of the current fiscal year for 6/30 of 2020 at $29.9 million. Take out the general fund deficit, which leaves our estimated fund balance for June 30th of 2021 at $29 million. We take out the committed reserves of $22.3 million, which leaves our general fund estimated unassigned fund balance of $6.6 million at June 30th of 2021. And I made a comment in the last presentation that some of these unassigned fund balances will have to be used to cover any negative fund balances that we may have, like in our grants fund, where the grants are reimbursable and we may not get the money in for those projects until the projects are complete, and so the general fund has to float some of that funding until the funding comes in from the agency that has awarded the city the grant. So the other special revenue fund that is kind of a big one is our fire fund. So there was a 4.9% contract increase, which totaled $294,000. The total contract for the year is $6.3 million. We have a revenue neutrality payment that goes out to the County of Riverside at $250,000. We're starting the business inspection program that the city is going to fund the cost of that until we can do a user fee study to determine the appropriate amount to charge to businesses, and then we're going to set it aside $8 million in a committed reserve for the building of a third fire station. So this is just really quickly to kind of highlight some five-year projections that I kind of went ahead and tried to put together. So this is assuming that we have a short-term recovery for COVID-19 and that the economy starts to recover quickly. This assumes a 1% property increase, tax increase for '21, '22, and 2% in the following years, and this assumes that foreclosures remain stable with limited impact to property values. Sales tax increases in the next fiscal year, 10% over projected actuals for 1920, and an average of 4.25% over the following years. Franchise fees remain steady. Development-based revenues increase in 2021, '22 on a scale of 5 to 15% for planning, building, and engineering. Fines, penalties, and forfeitures dramatically increase in '21, '22 on a scale of 25 to 45% based on the city's ability to reinstate citation processing. And then interest income remains flat. TOT, our transient occupancy tax, based on our hotel, potentially starts in 2022, '23, and then revenues recover to 18, 19 levels by '21, '22, and expenditures are estimated as a 3% increase year-over-year. And so you'll see the light green is the revenues flooding the background, and then our expenditures are the dark bars, and you can see they're fairly in line with each other, starting in the next fiscal year. So right now, we're using a little bit of reserves, and that's, again, to float the one-time expenditures that we have. So this is a bit of a long-term recovery, assuming that the COVID-19 impact actually triggers somewhat of a recession, and not a deep recession. This is kind of assuming something that we can still handle. So this would be a 2% property tax decrease for '21, '22, and a 1% decrease for following years, assuming that foreclosures begin and negative impacts to property values occur. Sales tax remains flat with small increases of less than 1% for following years, recovering to 17, 18 levels by the end of the five-year projection. Franchise fees are expected to decrease year-over-year. Development-based revenues decrease in the next fiscal year with slight increases in the following year. Fines, penalties, and forfeitures remain flat. Interest income would be reduced. TOT possibly starts if the hotels finish and actually can get people coming in, and then revenues remain below 18, 19 levels through the forecast, and then estimated expenditures would need to increase 5% in the next fiscal year, and then slightly decrease or increase year-over-year following after the '21, '22 year. And so this is really all up in the air. We really don't know what will happen. A lot of economists are pointing more to even a sharper recovery than this one, more of a checkmark recovery, where it really starts to go off and then takes off in the following years. I just kind of wanted to show this is, this is possibly where we could be going, not necessarily going to happen, but as long as we're able to control our expenditures, we can, we can stay in line with it, which is something to have out there. We're going to bring back financial reports quarterly for the council, so we can keep an eye on this, and the council can make changes as needed to either revenues or expenditures, and so we're going to monitor this and keep an eye on it. So the recommendations here is to conduct the public hearing and then adopt the following resolutions, the resolution for operating capital improvement budget, approving and adopting the annual GAN limit, approving the commitment of fund balance, establishing our authorized positions, and then the resolution for the salary schedule and range table. So that's the end of the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amanda, for that presentation and this long duration of having to do the budget, then getting the curve ball, and then having to redo the budget again, just due to the impacts of COVID-19. But definitely, we know you've been working, as Brian had mentioned, you've been working extremely hard to put this together, and we appreciate it. It's nice to know we're kind of at the tail end now of getting this finalized. With that said, before I go to council discussion and any questions, we'll go with public comment, and so if you're using, just anybody that's there listening, if you're joining using the GoToWebinar, you can raise your hand, which is again, an icon in front of your screen, and then the city clerk will then call you, and it's your turn, and we'll wait a few seconds before that goes on. But with that said, Mark, are there any current public comments?
Yes, mayor. First commenter is from Ike Boothma.
I'd just like to thank the staff for the hard work they put in on the budget, you know, doing it, starting with it, changing it, and getting it done in time. I really appreciate that, and I'm really happy that we are going with a hybrid police type situation, we're using the CSOs more. We want to keep our city as one of the safest cities in California, which we have over the last 10 years, so I'd like to keep moving forward without raising sales tax, you know, because we've been through a tight budget before, when we didn't have our money for the licensing fee, so it's, I think we can make a do, and I think we have the staff that can really do their job, and I'm really very proud of them. Thank you for the, really, there was a lot of pages to read on the budget, so I don't think I understand everything, but- So um, I, I don't think I understand everything, but I, I got enough of it. A well-thought-out budget. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ike.
The next comment card um, is from Michael O'Connor. Thank you for preparing a thoughtful budget in these trying times. The overall shortfall of under 1 million is much better than what most cities are projecting and a number that I think we should be proud of achieving. There are some obvious conservative figures in the overall budget that gives me hope that at the end of the day, at the end of this new fiscal year, we may come close to closing the gap even further. There are two areas I specifically want to comment. First, the property tax situation showing a dip of 4% of revenue is hopefully not going to hit this fiscal year. The assessor's office makes their assessment determination with an effective date of January 1st for the following fiscal year. I think this means we should be looking at property values as of January 1st to 2020 prior to COVID. Even if the assessor's data for January 1st, 2021 is the basis, we are likely to still be in good shape as property values have risen since January 2020 due to low interest rates and continued buyer demand. So we would first be giving up gains that don't yet show in the assessor figures. We also have a fairly large property value basis that is capped at 2% annually, annual increase that is likely not to be impacted by Prop 8 caps. Both of these fig, both of these factors give me hope that we will overachieve in this category. Secondly, I'm very pleased to see that the business inspection program was preserved. As you likely know, a major fire at a nearly new Amazon facility destroyed their facility in Redlands last week. It really drives home the importance of these inspections. End of comment.
Mark, is, is, thank you, Michael, for those comments as well. Mark, is there anybody else that's queued in or raised their hand?
Um, no one has raised their hand.
Okay. With that said, Eric, I just said, remember the protocol. Do we now close the public hearing for council discussion or does that happen after the fact?
If council has no clarifying questions for anyone in the public, you can close the hearing.
Okay. I'll, I'll, with that being said, I'll just give a few moments for Jocelyn or, or Clint. Not necessarily make comment, but if they have any questions on the questions from the public. And if not, we'll, we'll close the public hearing, but I'll, again, I'll wait a few seconds. Okay, we will now officially close the public hearing. And with that, I'll turn to council for discussion. What we'll do is we'll, I'll turn my colleagues that are here present, uh, which is council member Rigby and, and uh, Councilwoman Tesari, and then I'll go to Councilmember Lorremore, who is, who is on the GoToUh, webinar meeting, and then Mayor Pro Tem Yao. And then we'll just kind of circulate until we've, we've kind of uh, deliberated and, and have discussed. So I'll start with Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first and foremost, I wanted to thank you how we uh, conduct our meeting. I, I watched a meeting last night where there were board members that were cut off right at 2 minutes. In the middle of mid-sentence thoughts made absolutely no sense to me. So I appreciate how you allow us to, to share our input. Um, thank you to staff. Uh, thank you, Amanda, for all that you did. This is, I know we said it last time, um, but this is a tough thing to do, especially when you've already started the budget and working on the budget and have to come back and do it again. Um, and to find the cuts that we requested. So it's easy for us to make decisions, say, hey, figure out how to make it work. And we, we truly appreciate you making it work. Um, but I know that this is all of staff, so all of management team, everyone coming together. So thank you for, for doing this. Um, and I think our residents appreciate that too, because they see what's happening in these other cities uh, financially, e- especially right now, what's happening. And um, I, I'm very proud of, of what we're doing and where we're at financially. And I think it's a, a lot to attribute to our staff and what we, what you guys have done. So thank you. I do have a number of uh, questions and comments. Uh, my first is uh, kind of similar to, to last time regarding the salary increase and the number of positions. We're, we're having an increase of, of eight and a half positions. Um, it's important for us, well, first question I have, none of these positions are positions that were just recently laid off, right? They're all?
No, they were not.
Okay. So they're all basically contract staff or contract positions that we're trying to bring in-house.
Brand-new positions to the city.
Great. I know that there's concern when we look at line item budgets, and I said this last time, but I just want to reiterate it. I know there's concerns when we look at line item, uh, budget line items and we're seeing them increase, especially this, and it's increasing quite a bit. Um, and it's a concern. It's a concern when people look at the small part of, of the budget rather than the totality of the budget. It's important here that we don't look at just the salary budget line item alone, that we look at the operations. Because what's happening is, is we're basically like that chart you showed was excellent. Um, slide 16 shows that we're saving almost $600,000. And I think that's kind of a generous, or I, I think that's a conservative estimate that we're saving $600,000 by bringing those positions in-house. Um, so it can be deceiving when we look at the salary costs and we say, oh my goodness, the city just did layoffs, but yet they're proposing to increase their salary costs by 1.1, almost 1.2 million. Yeah, but by doing that, we're saving 1.8, almost 1.9 million dollars by doing that. And that's if these people come in at top steps. So there's like, like our city manager said, there's even a potential that we can save additional money. So I think that is crucial that we all understand, including the residents, that um, we understand that aspect of, of how that's happening. So I, I appreciate that uh, that we're doing that and bringing that. I, I'm in full support of bringing those positions in-house to save us $600,000.
Hey Todd, if I could just i- interrupt real quick, uh, um, the, we, one of the positions, it was laid off in one department, uh, but it will be coming back in another department. And that person will be reached out to, to, to see if we can bring them back on board. And that's the office specialist. It, it, it's not in the same department or the same area, but um, it, that position title will be uh, is, is part of it. And, and that, and that's just where the clarification is.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's awesome that, that we'll reach out to that person um, and give them an opportunity if they, if they so desire. Moving on to our law enforcement section, um, we were all disappointed when we saw the, the, when we projected our original increase of um, what was it, 4%, 5%, whatever we thought it was going to be. And then it came in at 7%. We were disappointed with that. Um, but we did have, I forget if it was back in January, February-ish sometime, that we had uh, people, we had a, two gentlemen from, um, I think they were from administration that came in, a lieutenant and a captain that came in and did a presentation for us um, for the public. It was during a city council meeting. It was one of our late, long city council meetings, I remember. Um, but did a thorough presentation on the hybrid model. And it, it makes sense. In fact, I was actually trying to push more towards something like this last year and bringing some CSOs on to help make more efficiencies in our deputies. Um, and it was very impressive to see what this lieutenant and this captain put together. Um, I would imagine with their staff and, and a number of individuals um, from management that gave a recommendation for us to um, have more efficiencies for our deputies uh, while saving some money or the potential of saving money. If you look at our budget, we are actually increasing our costs, increasing our number of law enforcement staff uh, within our city. And I think it's crucial, there's some, there's, there's been some talk about um, we're removing guns and badges and uh, things like that. But it's important to realize that we are, um, we're talking about efficiencies and we're also talking about recommendations from uh, from management in law enforcement that is familiar, that has worked with this, that has studied this. Once again, it was a lieutenant and a captain. I think a lot of this comes from, a lot of this talk and fear sometimes comes from uh, possibly those that are not in those positions of management being able to give these recommendations. Um, I appreciate the recommendations that were given from, from uh, the lieutenant and captain when they presented on this information. And I think it's a very valid point, which will help us to uh, be more efficient in our response times and what our deputies do. I also want to say that during this time, there's a lot of talk, a lot of rumor about law enforcement, about funding of law enforcement. I'm one of five. I fully support our law enforcement. I have a feeling that our, our, my colleagues do also. Um, I want our law enforcement to know that coming from me, there is no talk of defunding or anything within our law enforcement. I am in favor of the proposed budget of the increase of our law enforcement. Um, our law enforcement is doing a great job. As our mayor mentioned earlier, we had a, a couple of protests um, here in the city. We are a model city for these protests and that's because of our leadership in our law enforcement and what is, what has transpired over the last few weeks. Fully support our law enforcement. It's not our position to go in and, and um, make decisions, which our law enforcement does. We trust our law enforcement, we trust our, our police chief. Um, and I think it shows that we do by, by uh, I hope that my colleagues can support our, our budget specifically with our law enforcement tonight. Um, just to show our support to our law enforcement in our community. On slide number 26, we see the, the revenues. Um, question that I had on there was, does this include, I know you talked about the TOT for the ho- new hotel. Does this include any proposed businesses or vacant land or any potential? Or is this just what we have kind of on the books or that we have, um, like the hotel that's anticipated to come?
It's just based on what we currently have and then with the hotel coming online.
Okay, perfect. So as we start to see these other businesses, such as even uh, Goodman Center continue to develop, um, the Merge continue to develop, uh, all these other businesses, Hamner Place, um, the ultimate one that we always talk about, the legal property continue to develop or develop. Um, that we'll see hopefully these revenues. And that's why it's important that we, we focus on that and we look at those as investments, because we need to invest in those properties. We need to make sure that we can get our revenues up or else, as you can see in these graphs, this is the, the more of um, a short-term recovery. You look at the long-term recovery and it shows us in a little bit of trouble. But as we, that's why it's important for us to focus on these revenues. So I just wanted to make sure that it didn't include those and that we uh, um, continue to look at these new businesses, um, and continue to do what we can to invest in making sure that we have those revenue sources. On the next slide there, I know you talked about um, the, the long-term recovery if, if something happens that we're in a little bit more of a uh, recession type. Um, I think that is something that we need to just keep in mind and we do need to consider. Um, as you're, most are probably aware, the Fed did announce today that they anticipate a 6.5% decrease in the economy over the next, or throughout this year. Um, so with that happening, we don't know what's going to happen with the economy. Um, so I think it's important for us to continue to be mindful, be conservative of, of that. And I think our budget reflects that. We haven't done anything out of the ordinary that um, that we don't need to do um, or that isn't a, a cost saving to us. So that's all the comments and clarification that I have right now. So uh, once again, thank you, Amanda and, and staff.
If I may, um, we are planning on, the finance department is planning on with coordination with Brian, building a 10-year planning model, forecasting model, so that we can actually plug in things like the legal property coming online and Goodman spreading out. Um, and program in some, so we can get a detailed look at what this would look like in the next 10 years with some better information behind it. So our plan is to build that model and to kind of have as a tool. So if something does change, we can build those changes into the model and see what our revenues in the future would look like and what our expenditures would look like in the future.
I think that's good and I appreciate that. And I think it would be good for us just to have on hand, but I think it's, I think what you've done here, not including that stuff is very good, because um, we don't want to start to uh, budget for things that we don't know about, especially with um, certain properties. We don't know when they're going to begin developing. I mean, it could be next year, it could be another 10 years. Um, so I think the way you've done it is a great job. So thank you.
I'll also make a quick comment on that slide 26. I just, I always, I always kind of chuckle a little bit, because it's like, we'll put in the expenditures of the five-year projection, but we won't put in the revenues for it. It's kind of like this weird, I don't know, and I get why. It just always makes me laugh when I hear that's like, okay, well then we're really telling a really dark story. But the reality is, it's, it's not, that's not the actuality of it. But I get it. I get why we do it. So, but we, I appreciate it's extremely, extremely conservative budgeting. So, but thank you for that. And so, and thank you for, Todd, for bringing that up. I, I, I appreciate you bringing that up. Councilmembers, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I should have sent my comments down to Councilman Rigby. He, he covered an awful lot. That was good. Uh, and you eliminated some of the things I was, that was mainly with the staffing changes and bringing in the uh, contract positions. And you did a good job of explaining that so that uh, if there was any uh, perception out there that um, it wasn't a good decision. Uh, also uh, with the Sheriff's Department, uh, the only thing I would emphasize in addition to what you already covered was that the proposal to make the changes that we did and go with the uh, current uh, budget originated with the Sheriff's Department, did not come from within the city. Um, that was their proposal. Um, so anybody that has issues with it, it, it uh, I don't know of an agency that would go out there and deliberately cut staffing that they're providing for a contract city. So they came up with a really good idea, made a lot of sense, and I'm glad we were able to adopt it. Uh, the other thing I was going to bring up was, uh, Amanda, great job. Um, and when you mentioned uh, property tax increases and decreases, just to clarify for anybody that didn't catch it, you're actually referring to the receipts of property tax increases and decreases, not actual?
Yeah, and when, when we're looking at these um, forecasts, it's forecasting that we would actually experience foreclosures because of the recession and then we would lose out on those property taxes.
Yeah. And uh, and the other thing I would say is I agree with uh, Mr. O'Connor's uh, comment that I have the feeling we're going to close that gap. Things are going to, we're, we're, despite what's happened and what uh, is going on, um, I think our, our, our finances look pretty healthy. So we're very fortunate. Um, I think there was one other thing. If I remember, I'll bring it up. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tesari. And like I said, if you're a member, just give me a nod and we'll, we'll get you back on air. All right, we'll go, we'll go to uh, Councilmember Lorremore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I hear an echo or a microphone. Okay, I'm going to try now. Okay, that's good. Okay, um, thank you, uh, Amanda and uh, team for putting this together. Um, there, there is a lot that went into this, obviously, as was explained. Um, one of the things that I'm going to echo from both my colleagues that have already spoken, it, when, when we're talking about budgets, uh, it, it, it's very easy to go through and um, possibly miss nuance uh, that is very real. Uh, nuances when we're talking about budgets like this. Um, it, it, it is something that you need to pay attention to. And um, what, when we're talking about the law enforcement and actually we are spending more money on law enforcement. We're adding more law enforcement personnel to the city. Uh, it, during a, a, a financial hit that, that we're having here in town, um, that we've been able to put together this budget that uh, comes to what, what we've arrived at here. Um, it, it, well, a, a lot of hard work went into that. And the, the feedback from council on, on getting to this, uh, I want to congratulate my, my colleagues for um, the, the input and the, the forward thinking on these things. Um, you know, also the, the political, the, the, the context that, that we're facing right now, uh, th- this budget, taking into consideration the context of the COVID-19 and the, well, the uh, prognostication work in terms of loo- looking at the slide here uh, and how to put something together that is sustainable. Uh, it, it's important, but also going back to uh, Councilmember Rigby had talked about with the, the funding of law enforcement and how we as a community do support our law enforcement. Um, and, and you know, we're, we're, we're being impacted by the, the political discussions are, are coming down from the, the national level, even the, the, the state level. And we, we as a city, I appreciated the remarks that the, the mayor put out the other day. And we, we as a city, I appreciated the remarks that the, the mayor put out the other day talking about how we need to create our own narrative. And you know, we are a, a very diverse city and we, we have uh, you know, it, we are a majority-minority city. And uh, we, we do a very good job of, uh, I, I believe of being inclusive because that, that, that's, well, again, that's what we are. And um, so the, where I'm going with this is that the, the context in, in which we put this together, uh, it, it, it's important uh, to, to pay attention to it. Um, and I, I think that we've done a fantastic job while doing so. Um, and I, I'm appreciative of staff. I'm appreciative of the fact that we've been kept in the loop and had a budget updates um, leading up to this uh, presentations so that we, you know, could provide feedback and get to what we've arrived at. And so um, very good job and absolutely support law enforcement and uh, the, the section in here about actually spending the more money and having more law enforcement personnel in town. Uh, it, it says a lot that we're able to do that within these times. So um, those conclude my comments for now and I appreciate everybody's hard work in getting to this place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laura, for those, those words. We greatly appreciate that. Thank you. All right, Mayor Pro Tem Yao.
Thank you. Um, thank you Amanda for this presentation. This is really helpful and, and especially because I was not here last week. Um, so I, I appreciate this. And I do want to highlight, I, I know my colleagues, all of you already mentioned like good points, great points and regarding the budget and, and the current climate. Um, one thing that I do, again, I want to highlight, uh, cause I, I saw, you know, I had people reach out to me and I, I saw articles about it. I want to clarify, like people, I have people asking me, why is it that we are, why is it that it's so much more? How, in terms of like the funding for, for RSO? Um, and I do want to, I, again, I want to reiterate the fact that RSO, you know, we have, we're seeing a rate increase of what, seven percent? Which originally we were anticipating only four to five percent. Um, so that, that is also one, that is actually the main reason why we're seeing such an increase um, in our budget when it comes to RSO contracts. So just want to put it out there, reiterate that and make, make sure that everyone understands that. Um, it's not, I, I wish we could lower the rate, but um, that's, you know, that's where we're at. So um, but yeah, again, thank you Amanda for this presentation. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem for, for those words as well. Uh, yeah, I, I think, uh, I just, I want to first thank staff and, and my colleagues going through this time. It, it, it's also a very emotional time and when you're dealing with budgets and it makes it even harder, even though bud, sometimes budget's not part of that emotion, but it's sometimes hard to work through those things while you're dealing with a lot of other things. Okay, I just want to make sure that if, if microphones are off, just some little bit of back noise. Um, so I'm not gonna, you know, I, I just want to show my appreciation also to my colleagues. A lot of wise words were said among all the council members and the Mayor Pro Tem already and there's really nothing I'm going to add to it. I mean, what we said about law enforcement, I agree with my colleagues across the table. It, it, there's nothing really to add to other than I'm absolutely in agreement to what was already discussed. Uh, the one thing I'm just gonna add, if we can just go to slide seventeen. And that's what the, in regards to the contract, kind of the breakdown. So we, we've saved over six hundred thousand dollars just by transferring uh, positions from in-house to uh, contract center. But this is also showing that there could be over two million dollars in savings. And what I'd like to suggest, I can, I believe, I almost can't remember if I suggested this to the last budget uh, hearing, um, was that I'd like to have us kind of at a quarter, I think we're all doing quarterly updates, but really something very specific that we're on target to follow these savings. Um, and really closely monitor. I know, I know uh, Amanda, Gina, Brian, I know you guys are all doing a great job with that. But not just that, but the actual contracts that go out, that, that's kind of the power of going to um, uh, to, to having in-house is that there's actually considerable amount of savings when you're actually really closely managing the contracts that are, and we appreciate the services of Michael Baker and Inner West. Um, and, and we, we do appreciate everything done as well and we're going to continue to utilize them. Um, but it is, it is beneficial. It's better in finances uh, for us to, to monitor those expenses. And so I, I would like us when we do the budget to kind of make a note of this particular, this particular area of these item lines. That, that we're following this two million dollar savings on a quarterly basis and that we're just monitoring, that we're not going, not going over that or under that, like we're just kind of staying right on point um, with that. So I, with that, I, I think due to the circumstances that we have, I think this is a phenomenal job by all staff members, everyone that has their own departments, they have a budget on departments and Amanda for just kind of getting it all together and packaging it and presenting it. I think it's done a, a fantastic job. So thank you again. Um, I have no other comments, but I, I will go one more time around just to make sure if there is, is any other things that want to be said by our colleagues. And uh, I will go uh, to Councilman Rigby again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Councilmember Tassari made a comment that reminded me um, in Michael O'Connor just about the whole tax, uh, property tax thing. Um, I agree. I don't think that's going to hit this year. Um, I think it'll hit next year if we start to see that. Um, but another, a, a question that I had off of Michael O'Connor's uh, comment and thank you uh, Ike and Michael for your guys' comments on the, the budget. Um, the business inspection, that seventy-five thousand dollars, that's the fire inspection, right? Not just the business inspection.
Yeah, that's the fire business inspection program.
Okay, and that's, that's basically a new program that we're just starting and kind of like Mr. O'Connor said because of um, business fires that we've seen. We, I mean, we had Farmer Boys, we had, was it Domino's that had a fire? Um, and I think, I don't know, maybe Chief Vic can speak a little bit more to that, but I think some of these could have been uh, minimized or eliminated if we had some sort of regular inspection. I think that's kind of the purpose of implementing this.
Absolutely. Ca- uh, Councilmember Rigby, I'd be glad to comment on that. To say they could all, they could be one hundred percent prevented, I, I think we gotta, we gotta be realistic with that. But having an annual business uh, fire safety inspection program that covers ensuring the fire sprinklers are, have been certified, they're working properly, fire extinguishers, basic training. We could, we could go on and on on the components of annual fire safety inspection, but it definitely reduces the risk. Um, and that risk being very broad, life being number one, protecting the, the business, keeping that business in service so it's producing tax revenue. And then just, just some items of recent concern in addition to what we've had. Uh, LT and I were just, just uh, commenting on the large commercial fire that the city of Redlands had here recently. Um, I, I would imagine the cause and origin of that fire is still under investigation. But though, from a fire department perspective, we want to keep an incident in that prevent, prevent, uh, prevention phase rather than suppression phase. Um, and then the, to, one last item, all of uh, we've all uh, saw the uh, very tragic incident that occurred in the city of Los Angeles. Um, down in downtown LA that injured um, essentially almost twenty, I believe it was eleven, but I, I want to make sure I uh, round up to twenty personnel um, on an incident where they had, you know, some, some type of heated vapor gas explosion. All of you saw it on the news. The, that really uh, inspection program will really highlight being in our businesses annually. Uh, we're never going to be able to prevent everything, but at least we're out in front, we're in those businesses. And hopefully being uh, on top of uh, proper permitting, storage, the right size of, right type of building for the right type of uh, interior finish or what's being stored or distributed. So it um, there's a whole lot that goes into that inspection program. I'd be glad to share. When the ti- time is right, take all of you along on our, uh, once we uh, gather community support, the chamber support, take all of you along on a business inspection, but um, we're very excited about the opportunity.
Thank you. That was very well said and I think uh, um, the seventy-five thousand dollars in our budget is a very minimal cost for the things that you just talked about. The, the business preservation, but then also the life preservation also. So I, I think that's great and I think it's a, a great program that we'll be doing.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Councilmember Rigby. And thank you, Chief Vic, for, for bringing that up as well. And I concur, I kind of work, uh, work in that, for, for the industry of, of, of fire inspections and, and I understand the importance of that and, and in knowing the, you know, the benefits of protecting those business, the assets and, and life. So thank you. Councilmember Tassari, you good? Okay, Councilmember Lorimer.
Good, thank you.
You know what? You, Councilmember Lorimer, you said you're good?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I want to apologize. First off, I, I think I might have really uh, Amanda was actually going to respond to Councilman Rigby's question and Amanda, I, I apologize for, for cutting out. That was not my intent.
It's okay. I didn't want to wave you down. I just want to point out that the ongoing cost for that is only sixty-five thousand dollars. There's ten thousand built in to, to just get the program up and running and buy the computer, I think, and partial vehicle that we're going to share with another city. So the ongoing cost is only sixty-five thousand.
And I know that it's something small, but I, I think that if we can get some sort of uh, report back, um, if not annually or every six months or something, just because sixty-five thousand dollars for a recurring inspection annually, I think is a very, very good price for us. I just want to make sure that that gives us the opportunity to get in as many businesses as we can. Um, because I, I would hate for us to not get in some businesses because our budget doesn't allow, I mean, yes, we have to be smart with our budget, but I just want to make sure that we're taking care of as many businesses as we can. If we need to revise that next year or mid-year, if we're able to, um, if we can have that brought back. I just, I, going back to what Chief Vic said, the business preservation as well as the, the um, personal preservation, I mean, those are just huge things that we need to make sure we're, we're watching out for.
Thank you for that. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Yao.
I'm good. Thank you.
I'm just gonna have one last actually que- not even question, but just Brian, if you'd like to kind of take him, ask you a question and I'm just, I'll kind of throw a softball for you and, and, cause I know you've talked about it before. But the discussion going back on the contract versus city server, the discussion of, of unfunded liability and that we're, we're vulnerable to unfunded liability because we're adding more con- uh, sorry, we're adding more city staff. Would you mind touching on that and, and, and discussing that to the public as well?
Historically, yeah, we started out as a contract city and, and there was a lot of concern about moving away from a contract city. Um, but there's been real two main reasons why we have, we can do it in a more cost-effective way. But one of the concerns was a, a growing and unfunded liability with CalPERS. You hear that term thrown around a lot uh, by agencies. Um, and some agencies have unfunded liability in the billions, even within a few uh, miles of us. Um, and uh, I think we have to be very careful uh, about how unfunded liability and really understand how unfunded liability was created. One of the things with unfunded liability, as we've gone through our CalPERS audit that looked at us since we started CalPERS in twenty-twelve, uh, two years after we were incorporated, uh, up till twenty-eighteen when the audit was started in January or March or timeframe. Um, before I joined the city, um, we, um, there, there's two main reasons for unfunded liability to grow. One is an agency promises enhanced benefits to their, to their employees retroactively. And so if, 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 if an employee has been with an agency for twenty-five years and at that twenty-five year mark, this, this, the agency says, we're gonna take it instead of two percent at sixty, we're gonna make it three percent at sixty or two point seven percent at fifty-five or three percent at fifty or whatever, or we're gonna do lifetime medical benefits for you. Um, and a lot of agencies did that and they jumped on the bandwagon back in the eighties and nineties and early two thousands a- and these unfunded uh, liabilities grew. The, the, because they didn't pay for them for twenty-five years, but they gave somebody the benefit of them for twenty-five years. Uh, um, the, the, the other thing uh, that is a, is the number two or one, one of the top causes for unfunded liability i- is when CalPERS underperforms uh, their assumptions. Um, and uh, when they underperform their assumptions, um, the, the impact gets put back onto the agency that's a member. Um, CalPERS has been making pension reform to lower what their assumption is so that they can always exceed their assumption a- and reduce that. And if you look at the last ten years, CalPERS has exceeded their assumption. If you go back twenty years, they haven't because of the two thousand eight uh, um, uh, Great Recession. Um, the one thing that I want to say with the first cause, we, we as a city of, of Eastville cannot um, promise our employees uh, uh, enhanced benefits retroactively. It's against the pension reform. And so we were created as a city after pension reform was created. So our classic um, um, retirement is, is, is set at um, at two at sixty and, and and our uh, PEPRA is two at sixty-two. Um, so um, we can't give um, unless we fund it ourselves, um, but CalPERS won't allow it. Um, and so we're kind of protected in both of those situations. And one thing uh, that we talked about as, as, as a council and uh, and staff is what if we set up a pension liability reserve? But every year we put one to two percent of the costs of staff uh, of what, into that pension reserve um, as just part of our ongoing operating costs. And over a ten-year period, if CalPERS underperforms for one year, we've put two, one to two percent in for ten years and we have the ability to cover that cost or that downside or at least minimize the impact of it and we can pay off. Um, when we talk to CalPERS, we're in a, what, when, when they talk about our unfunded liability, they, they say, well, they round down, well, you pretty much have no unfunded liability. You have a very low unfunded liability. Um, now we don't know how much um, this COVID thing has impacted yet, so I'll knock on wood a little bit on that. Um, but uh, when we talk with CalPERS, when, when, when they talk about our unfunded liability, they're like, well, it's very different than other cities. A- and we can't get to the same place that other cities have done um, because of some of the decisions that they made that we can't make as a newer city. Uh, um, and so those are just some of the things um, wi- wi- with that. And so we're gonna put a little pension liability reserve uh, uh, away and, and uh, Amanda shared, it was about one point five, it was a pension liability. Uh, um, and um, and then we're gonna add to that every year so that it grows. Um, a- and we might even invest it in a stronger investment thing, uh, uh, return on investment program that CalPERS offers so that we can uh, have better returns on investment on it. So there's a number of things that we're gonna do as a city uh, to continue our conservative financial approach uh, to um, funding benefits and employee salaries um, and staying on top of that so it doesn't get out of control or we don't allow policy decisions uh, to do that. And so I just wanted to, to, to highlight that.
Ryan, thank you for the detailed explanation of that. I, I appreciate. I know that has been some concerns and, and so, and it's also, I'm glad you can clear up some of the uh, uh, some of the concerns that, that some people may have. All right, with that, I will uh, I'll ask for counsel for direction.
Move approval of the, of Lorimer?
I would second, oh. Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
Yes.
Mayor Pla?
Yes.
Question passes five to zero.
Congratulations, city staff, for putting together and having, having it approved. Great job. All right, uh, we'll now move to item twelve point one, uh, city council business. It's ordinance number seventeen dash zero five to update uh, participation in the transportation uniform mitigation fee, known as the Tump program. Repeal resolution seventeen dash six four and adopt proposed resolution number twenty dash XX, updating the Tump fee schedule. And this will be presented, I should, I thought it was gonna be Gina. You know, you want, you want to present Gina to?
I, I will defer to Mr. Hemsley. Um, and I can answer any questions that you have as well.
All right. Mr. Hemsley, it's all, the floor is yours.
Thank you, honorable mayor and councilmembers. Good to see you in person and those who are voices, those are.
Is that better? There we go. Okay. As I was saying, good to see you in person and those who are um, homebodies, good to hear you. Um, congratulations to Mayor Pro Tim Yao on your new addition. So this item before you is regarding the transportation uniform mitigation fee update, which was recently uh, increased by the Western Riverside Council Governments
which was recently uh increased by the Western Riverside Council Governments to keep up with the rising cost of new development. WRCOG adopted the Tump Nexus Study on October eighteen twenty, actually, two thousand two. And oh nine, prior to incorporation, the county passed a resolution authorizing the city to impose the Tump on new development. The Tump Nexus Study was updated in twenty sixteen and WRCOG amended their Tump ordinances to reflect the results. The city updated the Tump in resolution in twenty seventeen. The resolution being considered by council tonight states that the city finds the updated Nexus Studies are reasonable. The development community has notified, has been notified of the Tump fee increases, including the BIA. Uh, Councilmember Laura Moore, that's um Bureau of Indian Affairs, right? Just kidding. That's uh. The uh fees connected with by the Tump ordinance will help pay for the design, planning, construction, real acquisition for the regional transportation system improvements. The Tump ordinance allows for periodic updates, which is happening now. The Tump uh ordinance states that the council finds that the levies are in compliance with SEQA and the resolution provides the scheduled levies, which I will not read. Uh, so staff with that, staff recommends that the city adopt the resolution, adopting the updated Tump schedule and repealing the previous Tump Resolution Number seventeen dash sixty four. That concludes my report. You have to respond to any questions. Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, Mark, is there any public comments?
Not currently. We want to maybe give it.
Yeah, I'll give a couple of seconds. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, this is this is Clint.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I I I would like to, out of an abundance of caution, recuse myself from the Senate. So I will not speak again for you. Thank you.
You got it? Mark, you got that? That he'll be. Okay.
And no one has raised their hand.
All right. Then I will turn to council, uh minus Councilmember Laura Moore for discussion. And Councilman Rigby, you good? Councilmember Tassari?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any comments on it, but I would move approval.
Okay.
There aren't any.
Mayor Pro, do you have any con- uh comments before we move approval?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion uh from Councilmember Tassari. Do we have a second? Second?
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Yao?
Yes.
Mayor Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura Moore recuses. Motion passes four to zero.
Okay. We will now move to item two, uh, sorry, twelve point two, COVID nineteen update, and that'll be presented by our city manager, Brian Jones.
We were all just describing in the last three months that how every hour feels like dog years. Uh, um, we we we've accomplished a lot in the last three year, three months with COVID nineteen uh um as staff and um. Here's kind of a timeline. We 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 revised some of the items. Some items fall out and and more of the major milestones um stay in there. Um, this all started when President Trump, I think it was around noon Pacific Standard Time, uh, Friday, March thirteenth, uh, Friday the thirteenth, um, um, announced a a national state of emergency and and that basically put the management team in motion and we worked uh that Friday afternoon, Friday evening, Saturday. We had a special meeting on Sunday. We had an emergency meeting the following Tuesday. Uh, we shut down city uh city hall that Monday around noon. Um, and uh we went virtual within about forty eight hours of shutting down city hall. Uh, we didn't skip a beat on uh delivering pool permits, solar permits, um, construction inspection. Uh, the entire team worked tirelessly. Um, it it takes a lot more to manage people that are teleworking uh than when they're right next to you in your office or your cubicle. Um, but we did it. Um, a- and I think it was for the first twenty eight days, not a single management person, and that includes the weekends. Uh, took any time off. Um, there were some long days and weekends and nights um to make it all happen. Um, and a- and I can't praise the team and the entire staff for the adaptability. Uh, um, that is uh one of uh the signs of in- intelligence and survivability is adaptability and and um the city of Eastville adapted really well throughout this. Um, some key points, you can see the new Plexiglas i- um here in the in the um city hall. You have to have good posture for it to work. Uh, um, uh, um, but uh, um, yeah, um, but uh the Brandon, the new uh guidance for the gyms uh just came out, so um they they'll be open here pretty soon. Uh, um, uh, bars and schools and movie theaters uh will will be coming out or came out. So uh that we'll see a lot of changes on Friday this week. Um, yet on Monday, um, we o- opened city hall up and and this was a really cool thing to watch staff do. Um, we we were gonna ta- do a ticket number like the DMV and we said, no, we want to be better than the state government. Um, we we want to be better than and we don't want to be compared uh to that customer service approach. And um so uh no knock on the DMV, but we wanted to be better. Um, and so um now you can come to city hall and you can make an appointment with your smartphone uh by just ta- taking your camera and uh putting it over the GR code and it says, would you like to make an appointment with the city of Eastville? And we're gonna put that out there so that people can do that. Um, we're open from eight to noon every day. We're still on uh A and B shift, so we have most people in on a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, and then our permit techs at the counter and I'm here every day and I'm and most of the management team are here every day now. Um, we have been transitioning back and um we're seeing uh great customer service. We're still getting a lot of great compliments on on how responsive and helpful we have been. We we've had a few things slip through the cracks, uh, like a couple of pool permits. Um, uh, however, um, w- once we realized they slipped through the cracks, we got them fixed really quick. Um, um, a- and and part of that was due to, we must have some really incredible uh salesmen that are working in our city selling solar permits, um, because we had a record week of solar permit applications. Uh, and uh, of course, that is regulated by the state of California for our response times. And so we had to, you have to respond to those in a certain amount of time where everything else ha- ha- you can set its timeframe. So we were able to do that and we were really proud uh uh of of accomplishing that. Um, here's some stats. Confirmed cases in Riverside County is ninety five hundred ninety. Uh, the confirmed deaths in Riverside County, three hundred and sixty five. Confirmed recoveries in Riverside County is fifty four hundred. Uh, confirmed cases in Eastville uh uh is one sixty two. Um, and confirmed uh deaths in Eastville is now nine. Um, city hall reopened to the public and that's what the front hallway uh fa- front entryway looks like. We have similar Plexiglas up there to protect our staff and the public. Um, we have uh three windows that you can be serviced by and we have allow three people in in the area to practice social distancing. Um, you can see all the plans right there laid out. We are getting permits and there's a lot of, uh, I don't know if our residents are using their vacation money right now to invest in in their homes, but they're doing a lot of uh in in um investment in their homes and properties in Eastville. And we're seeing a lot of commercial development as well. Um, new check-in systems at the public set uh counter here. You have it right here. Um, and you can see the GR code. We have it on, we have it labeled on the door. We have it on a A-frame sign outside with a nice pink sign that says, we're open. It's neon pink. Uh, um, can't miss it, although some people walk by it. Um, new electric check-in system at the public counter and 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 then there's a a just like when you go to sport clips, you can see when you're about to get your haircut, um, you can when uh and it'll send you a text message, you're next if you're outside waiting in your air-conditioned car or with going and enjoying the shopping that we have now open in the Eastville Gateway. Um, the parking lot is filling up really nicely over at uh a- all the retail establishments and and uh a lot of retail therapy is occurring in our uh city. We saw one lady pushing two shopping carts full of clothes. I'm glad it wasn't my wife. Um, um, but I'm glad the sales tax revenue is coming in the city. Uh, resume uh resuming street sweeping, council decided we're gonna start that on July one. Um, and so we we are um getting that information out there, so we want to make sure everybody knows that we are gonna start up uh July one uh for street sweeping enforcement. Um, the governor has issued new uh guidelines for uh schools, gyms, camps, bars, uh, and professional sports. Uh, and I guess the NBA is gonna have a modified season here or uh playoffs, so um somebody's gonna recruit Mickey Mouse. Uh, huh? Oh, oh, and there's another sport like hockey or something. They're gonna play twenty fourteen playoffs too. Um, um, but community response. Um, here's it, uh, you know, it was it was really amazing. We, it was Friday. We had some parents that asked uh through Councilmember Tassari if they could use our council chambers because there was no other public space because everything was shut down. We said, sure, come on over to the city council chambers. Uh, mayor and I came in on a Friday and we helped them stuff a whole bunch of ba- bags of goodies. And one of the parents said, hey, could the city do something nice for for the seniors to make it special? Uh, um, and we had already put up the the big sign out on the digital board congratulating our seniors and um. But the idea, we had just had a generous donation from Amazon for about ten thousand dollars to our restaurant relief fund. And I did the quick math that there were about a thousand seniors graduating. And so ten thousand divided by a thousand came out to ten dollars a senior. A- and we reached out to Harry Demon, uh, the 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 mayor delegated it to me really quickly uh uh and said, uh, make it happen. And and we reached out to Harry and within a week, we had gift certificates, a thousand gift certificates spread out to all the businesses in Eastville and they can only be spent i- in Eastville. Uh, and so if you take the the ratio of what gift certificates are usually spent uh are used, if if sixty percent of them are used, forty percent is just pure profit uh for restaurants. Uh, but what we're hoping is that the seniors take their families with them a- and and tell them, hey, I'm gonna treat for ten dollars. Uh, um, and so that their families even spend more in our our restaurants and businesses and we have even a greater influx than ten thousand dollars into our restaurant economy. So uh we're hoping there. And there's uh Dr. Goings a- and um and all of uh receiving the the receipts on, um, we went over there and met with him. And reopening of the city council chambers. Congratulations to the one, two, three, four, five, six people from the public in here. So this is awesome and a few new faces in here, which is even more cool. Um, so um, so that's what it looks like without you in it a- and uh, um, but for those, for those that are out there in the public, you can now see um uh what what the council chambers looks like. Those chairs are approximately six feet apart from each other, a give or take a an inch or so. Um, and um, we're we're also doing this uh live with public comment on GoToWebinar. Um, so you can do both of those. And we have three council members here present and we have two that are using the GoToWebinar. A- and we have some people from the public that use the GoToWebinar and you can raise your hand and make a public comment live now. Um, and you can also still send in an email and we'll read it in for you as well. So there there's three new ways of of providing comment in in the community. So that's your COVID nineteen update uh for today.
Thanks for the the constant update that we have every meeting about this and it was something new. And and I just wanna, I want to thank Harry Demon, our chamber president, Brian yourself, um, w- w- in regards to the restaurant relief program and and be be able to give uh gift cards to our seniors. I mean, that 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 was literally an ask and then within five days delivered and it and that also included to have to print out those, all those thousand gift cards and so.
Print them out and get them signed.
Yeah, so uh it was just awesome to see that. And I know the parents and and they got a lot of good feedback about that, so thank you. Um, Mark, I'll turn if there's any public comment.
No, Mayor.
Okay, I will turn to our council and I'll start with uh Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for that report and for that update. Want to also say thank you to Amazon for their generous donation and then also to the chamber for um helping to facilitate that and and get that to those seniors. I know it's a tough time for those that are graduating and any little extra um recognition or any little extra gift for them is is a, I'm sure, much appreciated. Talked about, um, the governor released his new guidelines for opening things. Um, I've been trying to follow as much as I can and this is more of a question that will come up for uh J C S D. But have we heard anything about parks reopening at all? Are we aware of any projections or have we heard anything?
To date, he, to date, the governor hasn't provided any additional guidelines on opening playgrounds.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I know that's a question that's just coming up in 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 the community quite a bit and it's not. Um, just so everyone knows, it's not J C S D, just saying they don't want to open the parks right now. It's they're waiting for direction from the county. The county is waiting for direction from the state, so um. We're trying to get it open. We're trying to get the parks open. We want them open. I got three kids that uh are about ready to kill themselves um or kill each other. I'm in a wife that's probably right along line there. Um, so we're excited for the parks to open too, but I think it's something that we we've still got to be careful. Um, they are partially opened, but um I guess what I'm referring more to is the the organized youth sports and all that kind of stuff that hopefully we'll hear something soon.
The splash pads are open.
Yeah.
That's something.
Awesome.
Uh, Councilmember Rigby, we are hearing that all those youth sports are working with J C S D on a protocol um to develop those things. And so there is collaboration going on behind the scenes for when they get the green light. Um, but it hasn't given the green light yet, but they're putting some policies and procedures in place. A- and and from what I've heard, uh, they're they're working on some procedures and I think all of the youth sports in Eastville are working on that right now.
One of the things that they're anticipating is is that when this does open, that they're all gonna be required to have a safety plan put in place and submitted. So that is, like you said, that's something that all the leagues within Eastville are currently working on is to make sure that they have their safety plans submitted. And like you said, it's going back and forth between the leagues and and J C S D just to make sure that when we do receive the green light, that the leagues are are ready to go. Um, just one thing to add, um, and maybe Councilmember Tassari can jump in and and assist me with this, but we also had a uh um. Well, first, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we had a COVID nineteen recovery ad hoc meeting. I don't know if that's in the end or if that would be appropriate, just to share quickly right now during this update.
I I think it's absolutely appropriate. Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
Um, we had a meeting on uh a couple of days ago. Days just seem to run together. What was it? Tuesday, Monday? Was it yesterday? Oh, my bad. Yesterday, we had a meeting. It's the COVID nineteen Recovery Ad Hoc Committee or something along those lines, trying to focus on businesses getting reopened and what we can do as a city. Um, one of the things that we're trying to work on as a city is making sure that businesses know that we are in support of them trying to open. Um, obviously, there's guidelines and there's there's things that they need to follow. Um, we do partner with HDL with a lot of our our business um evaluation information. Uh, they give a lot of guidance and they have helped provide us with a guideline documentation or document. This staff is is finalizing right now, but it'll help to give guidelines to these businesses for opening. Um, and that's what this ad hoc committee is for, is is trying to figure out how we can be as supportive as we need to to open these businesses. So if you're a business owner, if you know a business that's running into issues opening, um, that's what we're here for. That's what this ad hoc committee is for, is to try and support those businesses in any way that we can to make sure that they open as quickly and as safe as possible. Um, so if if there's anything, uh, don't hesitate to reach out to myself or Councilmember Tassari or even our our city manager. Um, but we met with uh our chamber president yesterday regarding this and trying to work with the chamber to make sure that they, everyone's on board to get reopened. So I don't know if Councilmember Tassari has anything to add about that.
Uh, thanks, Todd. Um, yeah, I would just just to add on uh to what you already said, it's we are firmly behind every business getting open, up and running um to the maximum uh amount that you can while maintaining certain protocols when it comes to PPE and distancing. Um, if if any business owner, as the as Councilman Rigby said, uh, if you have questions, contact the city, contact uh the the chamber. If you want to know about using utilizing outdoor space that uh you hadn't before and you you want to come up with some idea, we in no way want to stand or or put up any barriers. We actually want to try and open things up for you. So if there's something the city can do to maybe change a policy or a code to uh allow the businesses to to function and start earning some revenue, uh, we're more than willing to explore anything that's uh that that may be possible for us to do. So that's that's all I got, sir. So that's that's all I got, sir.
We're even in the process of creating.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're even in the process of creating an outdoor dining uh over the counter administrative uh use permit uh um to, i- if if you can only have a certain capacity in your restaurant, you wanna have enough tables for a hundred percent capacity and using some outdoor areas. Uh, we, you know, we're gonna work with the developers. Uh, there's nothing more than these developers that own these shopping centers wanna do than get their businesses back running full, full occupancy. So um, so and and that's the same thing that we want as a city. Your success is our success. Um, and and your success as residents and businesses is our success.
Precisely. Well said, Brian. Thank you. Uh, actually, before we go to Councilman Lorimer, I think we have one public comment from.
Or or. Yes, uh, Michael O'Connor submitted a written comment. Uh, a reminder to everyone, the pandemic is far from over. The steps to reopen the economy are of course necessary. However, the need to social distance remains just as strong as ever. With that said, I will continue to try to participate. However, I will be remote, probably for another year until I am vaccinated. Thank you for your hard work and please continue to stay safe.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we'll now move to Councilman Lorimer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and to to my colleagues, I I also, I appreciate that that last comment that came uh from Mr. O'Connor. Uh, um, it was actually something that I was going to state as part of my comments here. Um, and that is that it's it's vital that we open up our economy. And I'm very happy to see that we are moving in in that direction and the businesses here in town are opening up. Um, but we we need to do so safely echoing, you know, what my colleagues have have stated. Um, earlier today, as part of a R C T C meeting, Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting, um, there was a a statement from one of our supervisors that said, um, you know, we we, we need to be cautious as we reopen up because we're on the edge as a county in terms of percentage uh of cases. And that if we start to backslide, which is a distinct possibility, as we start to open things back up, people need, uh, I'm sick and tired of this COVID nineteen, but it it's not gone away. Um, and until we do have a vaccine in place, we, i- it will continue to be around. And we we need to do everything that we can to protect ourselves, protect our loved ones, protect our neighbors uh by practicing the the basic things that we've been talking about of washing hands, keeping social distance, et cetera. Because the last thing um that we want is, we've gotten to this point where we're starting to open back up and that if our percentages go off, go in the wrong way, we may be forced by the state to turn things back around and close down. And we don't wanna see a yo-yo um effect happening of businesses being open and then having to close. It it doesn't allow for certainty, which is what our business community needs, which is what our economy needs in order to recover. And um, in terms of recovery, that is something that needs to be our focus uh a- as we move forward, not just for, well, of course, for our city because that's um, you know, our 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 elected role. But uh, as being council members, but also regionally, the boards that we sit on, um, I I have a feeling that that is going to be a continued focus for many agencies as we um move into the recovery stage as as best as possible, given the fact that we don't have a vaccine yet. Um. I didn't wanna highlight uh a- as part of council communications, um, the the graduations that took place, both of the STEM and also the um E R H S Eleanor Roosevelt High School and um, the new STEM Academy, the the graduates that uh had their ceremonies recently. And all of this took place during this time that that we've been seeing all of these changes. Uh, uh, students having to stay at home, changing how their school year ended, um, remote learning. Um, also during the same time, we we are having uh these national tragedies uh that have a widespread impact impacting um our residents and how, you you know, well, it it's just a tragedy uh what what happened and um subsequent protests. And uh, but with with all of the the COVID nineteen and then this national discussion that is taking place into our streets. Um, our young students, they're moving forward, they are graduating, they are overcoming. And um, it it's it's something that I I wanted to highlight because while all of the this tragedy and uncertainty is impacting us, we have these youth that, I I mean, the future is in front of them. I I got a little, I I posted on social media uh congratulations and um, I I said, you know, the future is is looking bright. And I had some people reach out and say, you know, that that's, that they they thought that I was being disingenuous. And I'm not. Uh, and I I wanna read a quote and it it is in relation to uh Eleanor Roosevelt, the the namesake of the school. And it says, "The future belongs to those that believe in the beauty of their dreams." And youth, that that that's one of the things that these graduates, you know, that they're they're showing that they are able to overcome. And uh, I I'm encouraging them to to believe in their dreams, to dream big because the future is theirs for the making. And um, what we were able to see with some of our youth, helping to even organize some of the peaceful protests that took place here in town, um, the future is theirs and it is whatever they want it to be because uh, you know, they're going to be moving up. So dream big uh and have that that vision for that future that they want. And um, we're gonna get there together as a community. Um, I I realize I'm being long-winded today, but um, I I also wanna highlight for those that haven't seen it, uh, the the mayor's comments that he posted on Facebook the other day. Um, worth a read, uh, well said. And um, let's conclude my comments. Um, and I I appreciate your lenience and hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lorimer. I know I don't, and I don't think it's it's it was disingenuous. So I I think it was wise words and and I appreciate your comments as well. And and I will, that's actually how I'm gonna end my council communication. I is actually reading what I had posted 'cause I I just feel like I need to. So um, but thank you again for your comments and and I I think they're very, they're wise words. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Yao.
Um, no, I was, I was gonna say, um, actually, council member Lorimer, um, basically just said what I, what I had in mind, you know, which is that, yes, I, just like my colleagues, just like a lot of folks out there, I want the economy to reopen and everything should be reopened. But also keep in mind of social distancing and and practicing hygiene, personal hygiene, and making sure that if possible, you know, wear a mask when you're going outside. Um, and I personally, you know, with with a newborn, this is something that I definitely care a lot about. Um, as as those of you with kids or without kids know this, the infants and newborns are at higher risk of severe illness. So that this is something that I'm really um cautious about and I hope that, you know, we can all um keep that in mind as well. And since we're going into council communication, I also wanna highlight that today is Juneteenth. Um, for those who do not know, Juneteenth is, it's um, I believe it's the, it's one of the oldest nationally celebrated. I know it's a com- commemoration of ending slavery in in our country. Um, and and so today, we, I just wanna acknowledge that it is Juneteenth. And since someone brought that up about Confederate flag, actually, that that was a really good point, something that I would love to see is, if possible, I would like to um have staff maybe look into some sort of order or something um, so that we can make sure that we do not have Confederate flags flying at any of our city or public spaces or public events in our city. So um, I'm not sure if that's possible to bring it back for next council meeting, but I would love to see that happen. And I think it would, I I think it's, at the very least, that we can do is to ban it in public spaces within our city. Um, and I I understand that it is, you know, for, for those who live in southern states, it's it, some might feel like it's it's, you know, it's the southern pride. But also, we have to keep in mind that it is, it is, for a lot of people, it is a symbol of slavery. And and so, and as we're talking about how we are a diverse city and we're not a southern state. Um, so I I think that that's the very least that we could do. So anyway, that's all, that's all I, that's all that I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. It was just as a reminder too, we we hadn't, and I think this could have been my fault. I, we weren't in council communications yet. We were still at item uh item twelve point two. Um, so we were, just wanna make sure that our discussions are related to the item that we were talking about, which is COVID nineteen. Um, but nevertheless, I I might have, I might have misled you. So I I apologize that that was on me. Uh, but thank you again for those comments. And we will still go to council communications uh as well when we get there. Um, I have no other comments uh on this other than keep up the great work. Keep, I mean, we have been, and this isn't just a, I don't think this is biased at all, being in my, being that, being in the city of Eastville. It's been very clear. I've had these other cities, city leaders reach out to me and say, you have been the absolute model on how you should be handling a pandemic and as far as communication concerned. And that's a reflection of our communications department and Brian Jones as well. You guys have done a phenomenal job. The out, the amount of output that we've put out there, the content, videos, you name it, the information has been great. And not just that, but just the the amount of going out out of our, out of our comfort zone to do really neat things for the community during this time. So keep up the great work. I have no comments. Um, yeah, this is just a receiving file, so there's really no really clear direction. I know, I know, Jocelyn, you kinda gave some a direction, but again, that can be done in council communication 'cause it's not in the purview of the item discussed. So when we get to that council, uh, we kinda have that recorded a- as far as what you mentioned, your comments. But in regards to COVID nineteen, it sounded like there was any clear direction and and that's okay 'cause it's just, again, it's a receivem file. All right, thank you. But with that, I will move to item twelve point three. And that's an update from Mayor Pro Tim Jocelyn Yao. I just made that up. It's not really on the item. But Jocelyn, how are you doing, by the way? You have a newborn, a beautiful baby boy. You wanna, just wanna give a brief update real quick on that? Did I lose her?
Okay, I I was muted.
Sorry if I put you on the spot there.
No, no, I was muted. Um, no, it's it's good. It's going great. Um, very little sleep, but it's okay. Um, and I have my mom helping me, which is great. And um, but in, we're still navigating this new, new journey, motherhood. Um, but, you know, and he actually, he has some, some sort of metabolic disorder. So we're dealing with that, trying to figure it out. Um, but hopefully, everything will be fine. And and yeah, and hopefully, I'll I'll get to be there at the meeting in person, hopefully, soon.
We appreciate that. And yes, please uh, please stay safe as well. And and so we appreciate that. And and again, congratulations from all of us. So there's nothing to vote on. That that was just a receivem file as well. So I think we're gonna be good. So.
He did join in the meeting, but he fell asleep. Like, he was, he was sitting on my lap and then he fell asleep. So, yeah, I guess, I guess we're not that entertaining, so.
Well, it hasn't happened tonight in here, but I've seen it happen other councils where audiences fall asleep as well, so. All right, we'll, that moved to item thirteen, uh, city manager report.
So as I shared a little bit earlier, uh, staff is testing a new lobby management system designed to provide city hall visitors with an improved and more organized visit while at the same time allowing for social distancing in the lobby. The system allows visitors to check in online via their smartphone or any browser and place themselves in line to see one of our counterstaff. The new system permits visitors to wait outside inside their air conditioning vehicle or even visit a nearby business and spend money in Eastville, all while keeping their place in line. Uh, when their turn is up, uh, they will be notified via text message to return to city hall. Um, my staff are using this for me. Um, they can also see an estimate on the wait time or book an appointment. I just gave my staff a bad idea. Um, they can all see an estimate of the wait time or book an appointment with one of our permit texts. The system will also provide very useful analytics to help us make decisions about staffing the front counter. Um, there are signs outside and inside the city hall lo- lobby with instructions on how to check in along with a convenient Q R code that can be i- in uh access with any smartphone camera rather than typing in the website. And the, it's like H T T P S um semi colon or colon forward slash forward slash W W W eastvilleca.gov. I want to check in to the front counter or something like that. So you can find it on the I want to page. Um. Um, the city of Eastville has been awarded a Cal Fire Urban Forestry Management Plan Grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately. Uh, I wanna thank Chief Vike and Chief Tovar for bringing their forestry team out and telling us about this money that we could be bringing to the city. And we were ver- it's a very competitive grant program, but our amazing team put together a great program. The objective of the projects are are to inventory the current urban forests, create an urban forest ma- management plan and implement a community-wide urban or early action tree planting project throughout the Eastville by planting three hundred and fifty trees along public right of way at bus stops and throughout parks. Um, and um, you know, we've had some trees disappear uh either through collisions or drought or or disease or 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 wind or whatever. Um, and so there's some missing trees in our landscaping. And so we're gonna really try to uh get out there and and plant a tree. Uh, they, the the old saying, uh, the best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago. The second best time to plant a tree is today. So uh, hopefully, we'll be planting a tree today here pretty soon so that people in twenty years can enjoy it. Approximately three hundred people have registered on East, Engage Eastville and two have been selected for gift card raffle. If you haven't signed up for Engage Eastville yet, please visit the page and sign up uh to Engage Eastville. Uh, we're gonna have a lot of discussion comments, uh, uh, or a lot of different topics in there um uh that will be coming out. Um, and one of the newest videos that we're gonna be showing is gonna be debuted right here, right now, live on Saturday night, I mean, Wednesday night.
Member Tim Yao, can you hear us?
Yes.
Awesome. Since, since Jocelyn is in, Jocelyn, did you have an update on RCA?
So RCA, we are having a meeting tomorrow, so I'll have an update um at our next council meeting.
Okay, perfect. So then all we have left is just, is is just Clint's three updates and then uh we can go to council communications on just, sorry, on separate uh items.
We just asked him to, to see if he could rejoin, give him a minute.
All right, we'll do is we'll continue council communication.
All right, what we'll do is we'll continue council communications. Uh. Again, all the community reports have been done with the exception of council member Lorimer. Again, we sorry we missed y'all. Um, we're back on and just kind of. Going off where we left, continue where we left off, uh Councilman Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a couple of items. Uh, one regarding the going back kind of to the COVID nineteen. Um, I could have shared it then. I totally forgot, but um. Just to reiterate how our city hall is up and functioning and doing well. I had a resident reach out to me about an issue um that they were having with uh um. Just a question regarding their pool build and um I was able to reach out to our city manager. City manager reached out to the building official. And I reached back out to this resident a few hours later after. City manager and the building official already responded and I asked the resident, hey, did you get that email? And he's like, yeah, sorry, I was at lunch. I didn't think everyone would respond so fast. Um, and I didn't mean to bug him while he was at lunch. I just wanted to make sure I had the right email address, but he was very, very, he and his wife were very appreciative. Of what uh what the city is doing um to keep things going and the responses and and just uh. Um, everything, so I mean, just to reiterate that staff is doing a great job in spite of this whole uh. Um, modified work, so thank you for that. Councilmember Lorimer and I re- received an email from a resident on Caxton Drive. Um, regarding the no parking. Um, this has been a topic that we've talked about multiple times and this resident was kind of. Uh, he said, I I feel like I was T-boned and blindsided by this coming and I was kind of shocked. For him to say that. Um, I actually drove by the area to see exactly where his house was and he happened to be outside. And I talked to him. Um, he just has some concerns about the whole no parking thing on Caxton. Uh, he has a couple of daughters that um are uh driving or that drive, have cars and makes it hard for them to park. He's. Considering putting in concrete, um, but we're gonna have a call tomorrow with uh council member Lorimer. I think it's tomorrow. And uh Brian, just to kind of further discuss, since that falls, it's literally the border of both of our zones, but. Um, I don't know if it's something that we'll bring back or if we'll just try and work something out for the resident or what, but I just wanted to give the rest of the councilors a heads up that. Um, that's coming in July, that no parking and that we did receive a uh a a concern from one resident, so we'll see how that works out. Um. Kind of a a question for law enforcement. It was brought up to me today. There was a, there was someone at a uh um, one of the shopping centers just here and um. Was confronted by a young, young female selling candy bars and um this person asked. The person um uh a number of questions that threw a lot of flags. And this person asked me, do you know if RSO has any? Well, let me back up. The flags kind of portrayed to potential some sort of trafficking. Um, because she didn't want to be there. She didn't have any supplies, no water, nothing. Um, she was doing a fundraiser. There's no, nothing to really be doing fundraisers for. Sports aren't in, schools aren't in. She didn't know what the fundraiser was for. She said this was just the area that she was told to go today. Um, so this person asked if there's, what should they do when they run into circumstances like that? And I said, call it in. Um, but I just don't know if there's any type of um special team that we have that looks into those or if that's a uh child. Services thing or um what's the best route to go? And I knew, I know we do see those every once in a while here in Eastville. You see the younger kids out. Um. Doing stuff like that, so.
Yeah, the best course of action for that would be, yeah, to report it. Let us know, make the, make the call so we can look into it and. And identify what it is and we can progress it from there, depending on what the circumstances are. Yeah, there is definitely some red flags with that. It may have just been somebody that was being. Opportunistic, trying to, you know, make an extra buck or two on the, on the yield of we're doing a, you know, a sports thing. But there may have been some, you know, suspicious activity there too. It 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 starts with a phone call to us through our dispatch.
Yeah, Riverside County has an RCAT team, which is.
Okay, just for those that didn't hear, Lieutenant Martin said that RSO does have an RCAT team for for human trafficking, so thank you. I will pass that information on. Um, but I I appreciate that, so that's all the updates that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rigby. All right, we have Councilor Lorimer back on. Uh, we actually were just starting council communications. We kind of paused for a moment. Uh, council member and we had uh, Councilor just give the uh, again, council communications, but if you can. Councilor Lorimer, we're gonna have you do the committee reports and that's pretty much all we have left for that and that it's uh League of California Cities, SCAG and our CTC.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to uh staff for working out the technical difficulties. Um. So really quickly on on those committee reports, I've already really given my council communications um. And and that is, let's let's start with RCTC. We had an RCTC meeting this morning. The the budget was approved. Um, and a a large budget, but also taking into consideration um. The impacts of COVID nineteen, specifically uh how it has impacted the toll revenues and also how. Um, the agency is communicating with uh individuals that have. Uh, had toll violations, et cetera. Um, they've actually stepped away from it, recognizing the. The difficulties that we're in. Um, it it also is reflecting, reflected in the pricing that we're seeing. Also, uh as we move forward, the uh. I fifteen corridor with the uh HOV lanes, high occupancy vehicle lanes, we should uh. See that opening in in November of this year. Um, there will be pricing that will. Very depending on traffic speed. It's a, it's a model that is being adopted that utilizes three uh. That that can change every three minutes. Um, but it is based upon the time that you pass through the gantry when you enter into the lane. Um, and that price will be reflected uh when you pass through it and you have the option to do so or not. Um, also, uh with RCTC and I would like this to be brought back actually before the council in the future. And this is in relation to uh SB seven forty-three, the implementation of that moving away from congestion to. Vehicle miles traveled. The this is a lot that is uh expected to um be implemented in July of this year. RCTC submitted to the state uh a letter upon approval of the board today, and I believe it was unanimous. Um, and ask to postpone implementation for another two years. And this is particularly important to those of us in the inland empire area, the inland regions of California, I guess, across the board, but. So many of our residents are commuters and also this impacts how uh we. Plan for development as we move forward, the um and VMT negative can can have negative impacts um. On inland cities for sure, for our residents and how we mitigate against those, how we're requested to mitigate, so. I I will be passing along to uh city staff, Gina, Brian, I'll be passing along the um. The resolution that was put forward today and some, the letter that was submitted by RCTC to the governor, and this is a part of a bicameral and also. Um, across the aisle, uh. Coalition of members that are, have concerns with this and um I know that this bill has been a a long time coming. Um, but it's here now and uh it it's something that. It'll be great if we could also see a reprieve, although I don't think that really solves the problem long term, but anything helps, I guess. Okay, so that's RCTC. Moving forward to SCAG, um, I believe council member, well, I know council member Tisari, I don't. Know if anybody else is able to join into the general assembly that took place last Thursday. Um, we had uh at the general assembly, we had the installation of new officers and with that, I'm I'm happy to. Um. Share that I I've moved in now to the spot of vice president for SCAG. Um, and SCAG it. Is going, you know, we're, is having to deal with, as we are in the city. Um, a lot of the the impacts of COVID nineteen and what that means for the future of transportation, et cetera, but. While SCAG is by its nature a a transportation agency, it also touches on housing, et cetera, and uh. But it also touches on the economy and one of the things that um leadership has decided. Is that we're going to be focusing on economic recovery for the region, for the Southern California region as we move forward this year. And this is something that will continue over the next couple of years, and so e- expect more information on that uh uh as we move forward. Um. For League of California Cities, uh we did have a division meeting on Monday uh for the leadership and there is uh. There's going to be an upcoming meeting, although it's going to be done virtually over in the city, uh, well, with the city of Paris. And um that's about a month away and I hope that everybody's going to be able to participate. I'm working on helping to round up some speakers for that. And um along with the rest of the executive committee. Also, uh, the state board meeting for the league is going to be taking place. Uh, next Friday and um so we'll have more information at the next council meeting to provide updates on. Information uh that comes out of that. The agenda for that has not been uh released yet. It'll be released on Friday and. So that's what I know. Those are the committee reports and um also for council communications. Kudos to our law enforcement uh for the way that they handled the the protests, the peaceful protests over the last couple of weeks, the um. What we were, what we saw at the council level shared through our our city manager um was very, very good work. Uh, kudos, great job and um, you know, while. The reason for these protests took place across the country, it's it it's gone to every city in this country now. And the the professionalism of our law enforcement is to be applauded and um. Really thank you all for the 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 work that you do day in and day out and um. Let's conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lorimer. Oh, actually, we have one question. Councilmember Rigby?
Not a question, but congratulations on your uh uh appointment and um. I guess your approval on your vice position or vice president position. So congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, it means a a lot more meetings, so, but considering that uh I am. Unfortunately, uh in a furlough, in an indefinite furlough position, right now I have a lot of time to do such things, so. It 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 works. Um, but th- thank you. I appreciate that, Tom.
Congratulations. You'll do a great job. Yeah, huge, huge congrats to being elected and obviously the next following year you'll be the president as well, so great, great job.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, um, Mayor Protem.